Officially call this meeting of the regular board township trustees meeting. The order for first order business is for the allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited to your justice.
Okay, I am, how many, um, how many Brookside residents do we have that are gonna be talking about? Don't, right, we got chief and you kind of sort of, alright, a little bit.
Not on the agenda.
Okay, alright, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna move things around here. Um, but to start things off, I'm looking for a motion to approve our regular session minutes of March the third.
Still moved.
Uh, second vote?
Yes.
Yes. Alright, I'm going to go with Chief Zambito first.
What? Do the deputy. We're gonna do the deputy, or do you have to take off? No, I, I don't, I think not for.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I mean.
Well, I'm okay.
You good?
Yes.
Alright.
Yes, absolutely, yeah. He did a real heroes. Can I use this?
You can use that, yeah, and you can move it.
Yeah.
Do whatever you need to do.
Alright. Do I need to consider anything? Just let me know when you need me to go to the next slide.
Just point, just point your finger out and that's.
You can make a click noise if you like, Jesus.
We tried finding a click here, but we couldn't find it. We're already clicking TV shows, they all, the, the, the room will make so much noise, I'm gonna click a channel. Uh, so again, I'm Mark Zambito, as you guys all know who I am, and I'm just happy to be standing in front of you today. Um, something that I wanna bring, uh, to your attention is that our, our council is going to be voting on a reinspection fee, uh, program that's gonna be starting, hopefully, they're gonna vote on in April. Um, but I'm gonna go ahead and put the slide there. So I'll give you a little bit of background on what we're doing right now, is that since two thousand eight, uh, we had, uh, just a lieutenant in fire prevention. Um, he was the only person working in there, but in two thousand twenty-four, this is the, the presentation I gave to our council. In two thousand twenty-four in April, we were able to, to get approved a fire inspector to be added, to be reinstated into that office, because for, uh, many years, there was two fire prevention officials in there, there was a lieutenant and then a firefighter sign in there, so we get the firefighter, which is the fire inspector, reinstated, um, into that role, and historically before that, we were only getting between like two thousand eight and two thousand and, uh, uh, twenty-three, we were only getting about two hundred to three hundred first time inspections done, uh, annually. And what a first time inspection is, is the first visit of an inspection cycle. Um, and then we do what's called reinspections after that, to make sure that the things have been corrected that we find. And sometimes we go, we don't need to go back, but, uh, the initial inspection is the first inspection. So in two thousand twenty-four, though, when we added Brad Reinhardt's, his name, um, into that office firefighter Brad Reinhardt, we were already saw an increase of over seven hundred and fifty inspections, initial inspections done, uh, at most that time from April, um, until the beginning of two thousand twenty-five, so next slide please. Um, so, when you do initial inspections, that's when you go off the first time, like I said, that causes re-inspections, inspections, because we find things that need to be corrected. And what we're doing is we're taking a lot of time to educate and, and help our occupants, um, understand why we're there and what we're doing, what we're pointing out to them, and understand that fire inspection is only done in commercial properties. Um, so when we complete, uh, a, a, a inspection, we will find, we would, it's, mostly we'll find some sort of violation that we need to have corrected. Um, but while we do do inspections, we do take time to let them fix things while we're there, so we don't have to come back. And then we just mark it as completed inspection if we're able to do that, and, uh, we found out to be very beneficial. Next slide please. So, um, most times, when we go back, the, the, what we found has been corrected. Um, but here's, whatever reason, uh, sometimes we can't get people to, uh, make those changes for various reasons, and some of them are very simple, um, violations that we need to have corrected. Um, but what's happening though is we're going out to some of these places seven, eight times for a simple violation, and the example that we see very common violation is the use of improper use of an extension cord. Um, an example of that though is that an extension cord is be used temporarily, like with a saw or a some sort of machine that you're gonna be finished with and put the extension cord back, but a lot of people tend to use extension cords permanently, and that's, that's, we actually, in our case studies in, in our area, that we have fires that have been caused by extension cords being used permanently. Um, so we do a reinspection, um, we're not, we're, when we do the reinspection, we're only there to check the violation that we found. So say if you have your, um, exit light is, is burnt out, we're only there looking at that item. We're not gonna go through and, and do a whole inspection and take your time from you, and, uh, we're not there for that, we're there to just, it's on that one cycle, we're there to fix that one problem that we put on, however many problems we found, we're there to make sure they've been corrected. Next slide please. So what's happening though is is doing multiple re-inspections, like I say, some of these people will go there once, but then other ones will go there six or seven times, seven, eight times. Um, but it, what's happening is is taking away from us being able to do initial inspections for our other occupancies in town. Um, but our goal is, is though, to make the community safer, that's what the bottom line is. Um, next slide please. So, our focus is to fix the hazards, and those hazards are for the people that work there, it's for the, the visitors, the customers that come in, it's for the neighboring businesses on, on either side who, well, I have, I could countless times, I've gone to fires, that seems like a simple fire that smokes off the unit that the fire is in, but the people in the strip mall or whatever the strip complex that they're in now have smoke damage from the one fire, because somebody neglected to do whatever. So we don't want that to happen, because what happens is people will have to shut their doors to get cleaned up, have syrup pro coming over it is, and we don't want to see that happen. And then finally, uh, uh, on, on the safety side of things, I, uh, don't want my firefighters or any firefighters to come help us to get hurt. That's like number one for me, um, because we cannot, it's, it's, they're fixable things. And then a small part of it is recouping some of the costs, but bottom line is, we're not here to make money off this. My dream would be is that we never ever collect a single penny off of this, that's not why we're going it. Um, people just don't want to comply for some reason. Next please. So, like I said, we have over seven hundred and fifty occupancy, occupancy inspections done, the, the initial inspection is done in two thousand twenty-four. Um, but we had just under fifteen hundred visits to, uh, those occupancies. Um, and some of those we went one time and we're done, but other ones, again, we went to many times, over a half dozen times. And then of those, three hundred and twenty-six of them were two plus re, the reinspection, what I mean by that is, we visited that property, when it's a second reinspection, it's actually the third time we've been there. And we've gone to some of these again, I'm just saying it again, uh, multiple re-inspections, and it, it, those are the ones we're focusing on trying to incentivize them to make the corrections, next slide please. So, a couple of things that we're doing already, and, uh, to make, I guess, it better for the business owner, is that we're offering courtesy inspections, so say if you have a business in, uh, in, in our area, we will come out, Lieutenant Don or firefighter Reinhardt will come out and actually walk through the building with you, so you know what to look for. So it doesn't count as your inspection. Um, we're trying to be as customer friendly as possible to the businesses, because we need the businesses, all of us need the businesses to survive, um, in our communities. So that, like I said, that does not count as your initial inspection. So we allow, what, when we do come for the inspection, we allow the occupants, the business owners, the occupants of the business to make corrections as we're walking through for the inspections, to say, for example, uh, under Ohio Fire Code, you cannot store items underneath of an electric panel. If we come across that with, uh, the, the occupant, we can say, this can't happen, can you fix this right now? And if they take a box of paper towels and put it over on the shelf, it's not getting chalked down as a violation, it's been fixed, so there's no reason to do that. That's a very elementary example, but that's an example of where Brad, Brad, it's actually two Brad's, the Brad and Brad show, um, there are two fire prevention guys. Um, that's where they try to help as much as possible, and then once we leave an inspection with violations, we give folks twenty-eight days a month, essentially, to make those changes, to make those repairs, updates, cleaning, whatever they need to clean up. And then we'll come back out, um, but if, in the meantime though, if there's something that needs to happen, say you need to install an outlet because of that extension cord I was telling you about, um, and you have a contractor coming, if you can show us documentation that you have a contractor coming, like you can show us proof that, that Mark Zambito Electric is coming out on this date, we will go ahead and push your reinspection back, so we're not coming, we don't wanna count that against you. You're showing us you're able to do it, but that has to happen within a timely, a, a reasonable timeframe. Um, and then the other thing that we do is we send out our assistant chief of EMS and community nurse reduction to, um, troubleshoot as much as possible. But again, it's taking away from her responsibilities, but she is extremely effective in getting people to make changes and and make improvements, I don't know why she's able to do that when she has some, some, uh, abilities to, uh, talk people into things. Next slide. So, give you a little bit of, uh, some comparables and then what we're thinking here. Liberty Township, so they charge, our friends to the north, they charge zero to five hundred dollars per the size of the occupancy for the initial inspection, and then the Ohio Fire Marshal Office charges a hundred dollars per re, the initial inspection, and we, our goal is to, we're not gonna charge anything for the initial inspection. The first reinspection, and that is when we come out to make sure the violations have been corrected, they charge fifty dollars at both, uh, locations, and then we still, we don't want to charge anything, we're not, again, we're not trying to make money off this. And then as you can see, uh, the other two agencies, how they have a, a scaled, uh, approach to the reinspection, and that's where we started, is on the second reinspection of a hundred and twenty-five dollars per visit, uh, and then it goes up fifty dollars per visit after that. Next slide please. So, some of this stuff is for our account, for my council when we presented to them, but our inspection software is equipped to issue invoices, um, so really no, um, additional equipment we need. Um, our inspectors will not be handling any type of payment at all, we don't want them to be touching credit cards, checks, cash, nothing, that's not what we do. Um, and then the, the payments go directly to our finance department, so it's not gonna be even anywhere near the fire division of fire EMS. Um, and then I wanna point out too though, these re-inspections are not taking the place of citations. Citations are where somebody has a very egregious, uh, in-your-face violation, that's very dangerous, that we need to address immediately, um, and that's a different path. We choose not to use that currently to fix this problem, because citations, a couple of things, they're very, they're very labor intensive for the fire prevention office, but they're very embarrassing for the business owner, because you have signage put on the front door saying that this X violations, X, Y, and Z have, are on this property, um, and it's extremely expensive for all parties at all. Again, we're not trying to cause people to have to pay money out of pocket, we don't want that to happen. However, that is a tool that we have, that if you choose to thumb your nose at us and you store gasoline in your office space, or whatever it may be, we have the ability to go down that path, we have to, next slide please. So, in the conclusion, with the second person in prevention has really helped out tremendously in getting us out of those buildings, but our main focus is we wanna make our fire protection areas safer for the residents, the business owners, the businesses, and then our firefighters, so I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have on that. This is more of a, uh, sort of awareness thing for you guys, that our council is getting ready to vote on this.
So chief, uh, I know we've talked about this, and I appreciate the fact you take in the direction that you're not charging for that until you get further into the process, and we've had a couple circumstances where we've had to personally persuade our businesses to comply, I, I'm always confused by, why are you not just instantly complying with the fire department? I mean, but, uh, everybody has different reasons, is there any way that we can, besides you calling me, is there any way you can, like, give us a report? Do, let me ask you this, does anybody at the city receive like a report of, we was kinda in trouble?
No.
Okay.
Uh, our law director gets involved in our certification, but other than that, no.
Okay.
Um.
So I, I guess what I'm saying is that sometimes we do have some influence over our business owners to encourage them strongly to simply comply with what you should already be complying with.
Yeah. Um. Let me look into that, I may be able to do something for you guys, uh, my type.
I mean, even if you were to give it to somebody like the administrator or the chief, or somebody besides the politician, you know, you're giving it to somebody more of authority, um, but then we could have a conversation about how we approach that business owner. We don't have a lot of business owners in the township, but those that we do are very important to us, just like they're important to you. Um, and sometimes we just need to take a different approach, uh, with them in regards to how we get them to the end goal, which is to be in compliance and for them to be safe and successful as a business going forward.
And, and I mean, the net is, even if there isn't, even if there isn't a report, if you needed partnership.
Absolutely.
To address, I mean, we're happy.
And we, and we've done that, and I appreciate that.
And we've, we've been able to get people to.
Right, it just, I, and chief, I, I am utterly confused every time we have these conversations with these business owners, like, these are so simple things, like, it's gonna cost you like a hundred bucks.
Sorry, walk up to the, the thighs.
Are done.
Yeah.
Getting animated, yeah, I almost tell you, just don't do that. Did you have the chution to jump up and tackle me? No, but the thing is though, is that people could see what we see, right?
Yeah.
And how a person's business, because of some silly thing like an extension cord is now shut down for six months or permanently.
Right.
It's heartbreaking.
Right.
And they don't, they've never had to call the fire department, so they don't feel like it's necessary that they have to fix those minimal, those minor things in their mind. But we have seen the fallout of those situations, and it's, it's, uh, like I said, it's heartbreaking and you wish you'd turned back time, but, um, this is our chance to prevent things from happening.
Well jokingly, I, I was whispering to Chief, to, uh, Petrosi, saying, well, you know, if they carried a gun, maybe it would help him, I don't know. But I mean, my point is, is that, and, and they, and they are America's hero, right? Yeah, it's Jimmy Brearton, okay, so I just don't understand it. When the fire department comes and says, you have X, Y, and Z, and it doesn't cost you a boatload of money, just do it.
Yeah.
So, I have a question, so being a, um, business owner in Worthington and owning a building, and we're not in violation.
So you know, can you go out there?
Just, just like, no, I'm, I'm, I'm on violation.
But it did catch on thought.
That wasn't us, that was our neighbors.
Yeah.
No, anyway.
Go ahead.
Um, what's, what's the timeframe, like, I know you, you guys have been through our space and kinda go through, what, like, what's that, once a year?
So, that's a great question, so with only one person in the prevention bureau for fifteen years, we became so far backlogged that we weren't getting the buildings for eight, nine, ten years, there's a couple that were ten years.
Yeah.
And that's just not acceptable, so we've now fixed that. The dream is, it's called an annual fire inspection.
Okay.
Right now, we're working towards our goal is to get in every building at least once every two years, but we have a list of high hazard buildings, schools, churches, um, probably buildings, certain buildings that are, uh, high, there's a potential high loss of life, that we want, that we, our goal is to get into them every year.
Okay.
Once we get established, when we get, because what's happening is we're going out, having to be a lot of time educated, so in this, in the inspection that should last you forty-five minutes, it's taking three hours, because, uh, they're out there teaching the people, which is cool, that's great, but they're having, doing a lot of education, so it's, we haven't seen an inspector here in, in whatever, six years.
Yeah.
How many commercial properties are there?
Sixteen hundred. Sixteen hundred between Worthington, Sharon, and Perry, um, and those are occupancies. So for example, if you know Humley Road, we have Hyperion on Humley Road, and I believe they have sixteen occupancies on their property, so each, uh, building on the property, so your business would get at least eight occupancies, which equals eight businesses.
Okay.
Um, so, so we have sixteen hundred places to inspect, uh, in our area. It's a lot, it's a gigantic amount, those guys to be able to hit almost, whatever it was, seven fifty, between seven fifty and eight hundred, I'm so proud of them, because they're getting off, they're defining the hazards, they're reporting back to the, the firefighters and paramedics who are on duty, because they now know the hazards that they're finding, there's an example of a building in Worthington, I won't say what street it's on, but that, our, our prevention guys went in there and found the whole third floor had all the suppression system removed out of it, without telling it. So, the, the answer was, well, no one's up going to be office repairing anymore, it's the issue of the storage. Can you imagine turning the corner at two in the morning, and so the entire third floor of building that's supposed to be sprinklered, just, right? I mean, it would be, but, so we found it, that was a hazard that Lieutenant Don and, or, I think it's Lieutenant Don, um, found, and he was able to correct before somebody got hurt, or somebody's business.
Yeah.
Burned out, so, um, I'm so proud of these guys, of what they've been able to accomplish, and I can't say that enough, and, um, so, I, I wanted to come here to be able to answer questions for you guys, and let's let you know what we're working on, but, um, we're very proud to be your fire department, so. Chief, do you see the, any, is, is council pushing back at all, or are they very supportive of this, and, 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 yes, it's worth it? Okay, yeah. It's gonna be, yeah.
Let that hit the front page.
Yeah, so, just, just to end with this, is, like I said, if we don't collect a single penny, we don't send out a single invoice, we had to stick us. Yeah, things have been things, so.
Brad, the neighborhood, that's.
Brad, Brad Reinhardt, I mean?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Big Brad, yeah, that'd be right.
Um, yeah, he's a, he's one of your residents.
Yeah, he's a good guy, yeah.
Yeah. So, appreciate your time, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, buddy. Thank you. With more than eight minutes.
Nine and a half.
Started late, if, if, and yet started on time.
Uh, to relate to the IT issues from earlier, uh, the sheriff's office, if you guys ever looked at your phone, they have apps on here, the sheriff's office now has an app, so if you guys want to download that.
Oh.
Just get a password and search, uh, pretty, I mean, file.
Yeah.
Get updates on, uh, like road closures, snow emergencies, major crimes, things like that. Uh, we did have a bridge truck get robbed today in Valley, so.
Yeah.
Probably on the app, so. Uh, what was, what was the, where? Um, and then, uh, the twenty-sixth of April is DEA, if we'll go take that. That's, uh, pretty much all I have, I guess, on your big time. How's family? Uh, heading to a softball scrimmage.
There you go.
After this, okay. That's the only.
The harbinger of spring.
Should be a, should be a long season.
Right, so, yes, thank you.
Yep.
Alright. Um, well, I tell you what, we're gonna go into public comment period, but let's move Brookside up.
Yeah. So, um, the only, the two updates that I have, and I'll certainly defer to the folks from the board that are here, um, is, uh, April twenty-sixth is the spring fling, May third is the garage sale, thank you to the board for waiving the uh, permit fees for the garage sale. Um, you have any additional information, you, that puts you on the spot, and you'd like to share about the spring fling?
Um, well, we're working on getting some vendors, we're still in contact phase, but, yeah.
It'll be fun, yeah. I'm, I'm sure it will be great. Do you have the support that you need, did you already go through the event process with police department, or do we need to do that?
I believe.
Okay. I mean, if I can help, I'm happy to.
Okay.
That's, that Brookside. On that period, you wanna go ahead and shift down?
Yeah.
The, okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Yep.
And we can let this go if they don't wanna be bored with the rest of our meeting, that's up to you. So, um, on the administrator agenda is the Columbus development across State Route one sixty-one from McVeigh Boulevard. You know, we've all had a variety of conversations with, about that, and I know that, you know, the residents that are here from Brookside certainly wanted to perhaps share some perspective, I don't, if, I'm not sure if you folks wanted to speak each, or, oh, yeah.
I can speak.
Go ahead. No, I, I'm just here to understand, I, so I didn't know how to learn what's going on, and whether we can help any effort among Perry Township to influence some of the decisions that are being made, if that's even a possibility, so I, I just thought I'd come here.
No, I'm glad you did, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Did, Rachel, did you wanna?
Yeah, is it, I?
Yeah, of course, you can stand or stand.
And you can sit, stand, however, whatever you're comfortable with.
We are not a formal bunch.
No, I just wanted to share, I know, um, Chet and I had talked briefly, but, um, you know, one of the things at the Northwest Civic Association meeting that a number of us, um, neighbors attended, I think the thing that really stuck out to me was the fact that on the apartment side alone, they have five hundred and seventy-two parking spots, slots slated, and that's only on the apartment side. So that's half the development will have five hundred and seventy-two parking spots. Um, we were also concerned that, um, we learned that Perry Township hadn't been contacted or informed of, um, the traffic study that had happened, um, and we felt brushed off by, uh, they were like, you basically don't belong here, and we were like, we know, but, um, Councilman Weish told us in a meeting online that that was where we were supposed to go to voice our concerns. Um, and I think, you know, we talked quite a bit at the meeting in the summertime, um, that we already feel like our roads are not safe. Um, you know, especially a school drop-off and pickup, there's severe congestion, um, and there's no way to increase the width or depth of the drop-off circle at the school. We've talked to the principal, and there's, there's really no way for us to be able to increase the amount of pedestrian or vehicle traffic that goes in and out of our circle. Um, the increased traffic will also increase speed, especially, I feel like, if there's frustration at that light at one sixty-one, um, because we've all been there, if you can't go left or right, you're gonna be frustrated, and where are you gonna go? You're gonna go straight, and then you're gonna be late, because you have to go all the way down McVeigh, out and around either to Sawmill or to Lenworth. Um, you know, the pedestrians use the roadway with no, uh, with no sidewalks, um, and we already know that people don't pay attention, further increasing the danger for our neighbors with the way that the road was built and bends. Um, few examples, thinking a few years back, the person who hit the fire hydrant. Um, the road barely bends on McVeigh at Darwin, and that person wasn't paying attention and hit, like knocked the fire hydrant clear out of the ground and landed in my front yard.
Right.
Um, thinking about the person who just recently flipped over on the bend at the bottom of the hill on McVeigh. Um, you know, crosswalks were on the blueprint, um, that they shared at the Northwest Civic Association. Um, but when we asked about the concerns of safety, um, they were like, well, there's crosswalks, and we were like, to where? The ditch on one sixty-one? I mean, it doesn't, not helpful, um.
And that's the developer that you're referring to, right?
Yes, yes.
That's what I thought.
Um.
You made sure.
Yes, um, and I think about just on the way here, we were traveling on snuffer, and there's that pedestrian walkway, and people were standing at the crosswalk, and they had hit the light, and people were still driving straight through that, not stopping. Um, so, you know, I'm, I'm not against development, um, I understand we have a housing shortage in our city. Um, I just think that if this is going to go through, we really have to be very clear and prepared for the increased traffic in the neighborhood.
May I ask one other, and I'm sorry, before you speak, one other clarifying question, when you said that they made you feel that you didn't belong there, do you mean the developer, or are you talking about N W C A?
So, N W C, so it was, it, it's partially my fault, so I, I posted on our Facebook page, uh, or the Brookside Civic Association, if you wanna go and learn more about the development, the developer is gonna be there, Northwest Civic Association has agreed to allow us to attend. Um, and again, that is where the city councilman told us to go, to stay involved and to be, uh, to be more vocal. And we got into the meeting, and it was just very clear that their goal for the meeting was to have their zoning person inform the rest of their board and give any answers to questions they had, so that they could very quickly get to a vote and decide whether to approve the project or not. And so, you know, I feel partially responsible for that, because I didn't communicate that clearly, but there was no other venue available to us, you know.
Let me answer this question, what?
We've partnered with them, and.
Why do you think it's your fault?
Yeah, I don't think it's your fault at all.
Because Monica made it very clear to me that this is our meeting to inform our board members and make a decision. Yes, you guys can come along to listen and learn, but this is not your meeting.
Listen, it's, it's a, it's a public meeting.
Okay, they, but they had an agenda and they had.
And I understand that.
Well, they may not like it, because you weren't presenting the position that they wanted to present, but you, I mean, certainly you did nothing wrong in being in that meeting, and we have participated and engaged with them, helped them, et cetera, in the past, as, and I'm speaking from my civic association former role in addition to the township role, so that.
So the point was, where do we go to be a part of this discussion, you know? You know, when we, when we saw the, the information come out of the October City Columbus staff meeting, it was, okay, we're gonna take all these steps, and this is very early in the process, and don't worry about it, and, well, and then next thing you know, well, hey, the traffic study's already done, and we've already made modifications, and it's going to N W C A, and it's gonna go to the Development Commission, and it could go to city council as early as the end of March. We're like, well, wait a minute, I thought this was moving slow, and we were gonna have an opportunity to participate, and yet, if we don't participate before the end of March.
It's already passed the Development Commission.
Yeah, exactly, so that's.
So.
So where do we go to participate, where do we go to, to find out, well, why is it that the traffic study assumed zero cars leaving that development going north on McVeigh? That's what the new traffic study says.
Well, there's.
So I think wasn't that the?
The traffic study.
That was the developer's traffic study, wasn't it?
Correct.
But it was set out, it was agreed to by ODOT.
Um, no. It has not been agreed to by, yeah.
The initial scope of the traffic.
The scope has been, you have to get ODOT approval for a scope to even conduct a traffic study. So I was with, with, we were at a one sixty-one meeting yesterday, I, I never go to meetings, and ob, obviously, I end up talking about something totally different than what the meeting was for, so, uh, I took another hour after that meeting just to talk about this development with ODOT. Uh, I took another hour after that meeting just to talk about this development with ODOT in Columbus and, um, cause all the right people were there to talk to them about this. And so that's when they did tell me that it did pass the Development Commission and said it to, to councils. And it's highly likely get councils gonna, wanna approve.
Yeah.
Okay, let's not get our, you know, let's be realistic in our expectations here. Um, there, there are two problems with there, that the developer's going to face. One is the actual traffic study. Uh, so, uh, we have asked for a copy of the traffic study. It is a public document because ODOT possesses it right now. And I did ask the deputy director to say, I'm gonna ask you for this. Don't have me put it in writing to you because then it gets real sticky and I, our relationships are important, so just give it to me. And so, um, what I need to talk to the board tonight is because I'm not a traffic engineer. Um. I'm not a traffic engineer and cannot ascertain what that traffic study or the results of the developer's traffic study says or doesn't say. Uh, so I wanna talk to them briefly about, and I talked to Michelle about this, about retaining, uh, a company, I don't know which one yet. Um, that actually does traffic studies, reviews traffic studies and kinda give us a breakdown of really what it is and what it's not. Uh, and then go back and have a conversation, uh, with our good friends from City of Columbus and ODOT and say, here's what we see as a problem. Now, what they have said, what ODOT has said to me yesterday is that there's two major problems with the traffic study. One, we are most likely not gonna give them a traffic light, a signal there.
At McVeigh.
At McVeigh. Uh, because the numbers don't account for that. Now, I'm sure the developer's gonna push back and want that traffic light. Um, they also have a problem about having a, and so therefore it'd be a right in, right out kinda situation. There'll also be a requirement.
Do you know what, do you get what that, okay, I'm sorry, I'm not.
Thank you.
Just wanna make sure.
Great. Add to it when I, I go too fast. Okay. So they are going to, uh, also require that there be a turn lane. So that would require the actual widening of a road so far in distance beyond, beyond their distance or width of their property. So they're actually going to have to take some right away as well as purchase some property from their neighbors to do that. Now, their neighbors may not wanna sell and that could be a problem for them.
It'll be unfortunate.
So that's one, one barrier to this whole thing. The numbers are a barrier.
The neighbors on their side, on the south side of one sixty-one, you've got the properties to the, if I'm facing that property, you've got the properties to the left.
So like the, the.
The, the attorney and tax.
The county, yeah.
Okay.
And then, and then on the other side, on the, the west side as well, they're gonna have to.
It's never.
So, so, yeah, so they're all going to have to be willing to sell them property. Now, if they, if those property owners say, no, we don't wanna sell to you. What they could do, the developer could come back to the city and say, listen, we can't work this out. We'll give you the money to do it and you then take that, do a take. Uh, and basically, I'm sorry, it's where a local government can come in and basically say, I'm gonna take this.
Imminent domain.
Imminent domain. I'm gonna take this property from you. I'm gonna give you a fair market value and that's it.
That's what the people who live at the corner of McVeigh and one sixty-one were concerned about. For their own problem, yes.
Yes, but the city does not have to do that and they're not inclined to do that. They have the ability to do it, but they're not.
Does the city have the ability to do that on our township properties?
No.
So we're talking about the properties on the south side.
Right. So in there lies all the, these issues, but again, I'm not, he's a landscape architect. He's an attorney. She's a salesperson. I'm a bureaucrat. None of us, none of us are, you know, civil engineers, traffic engineers, whatever. That's why we will need some assistance. So we're basically reading what that report says. And then having further conversations with ODOT in Columbus and to say, here's where we see your problem is, right here. Because our consultants are telling that. And so having that knowledge, yes, bless you. Uh, having that knowledge will assist us in our argument going forward. On top of that, we will have to reach out to those property owners. They're not Perry Township property owners, but we happen to have, we do happen to have relationships with them, imaginably. So, um, so we, we think, I'm sorry, I think uh, that it is way too dense. Uh, and listen, I understand there may be a housing issue. That's not my concern. My concern is Brookside Estates and the impact that that type of development will have on a community within Perry Township. That's my only concern in this thing. And so how do we minimize that impact? If, if a development project moves forward and how do we put in place mitigating factors that will address some of the concerns that you said, traffic? And again, Michelle and I pleasantly disagree on one thing about, about the flow traffic. I think you have a volume problem. Some people believe you have a speeding problem.
I think we both.
But I will tell you, I will tell you that if five percent of a hundred cars is speeding and then you have a thousand cars, now you got fifty cars speeding. So the volume is only gonna increase.
Correct.
Correct.
So in there lies a bunch of stuff, I know. Michelle has also been on me for ever to, to have some options for Brookside. Uh, regarding like sidewalks and speed bumps and things like that. So last night, I had all my townships together for dinner. It wasn't a great dinner, but it was dinner and you had to feed them, you know? So the county engineer was there, so we had a conversation uh, regarding, uh, Linkus. I don't know if you've ever heard, it just passed. So there's a lot of money involved in this. There's a lot of money for primary infrastructure, meaning building roads, repaving roads that exists. But there's a secondary market, infrastructure market, that they're gonna take over. And this involves multi-use pathways, it involves sidewalks. And that's where our relationship with the county engineer is gonna come into play because we're gonna go after them.
So that's grant money because obviously the, the challenge, of course, and, and you guys have heard of the boards, is where does the money come from, right? Um, without making it either a bill to the homeowners on that road or a bill to all of the homeowners in the neighborhood. Um, and, and I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure that we're clear what, why we're talking about it. And I know that there's frustration because we've kind of piece parted like bits, like we have the Safe Routes to School grant that we're putting in a little bit. And that's because if you get the money, you gotta take it, even if it doesn't do the whole piece in hopes that it continues to set the stage for future where, look, we have this piece of sidewalk that needs to be connected in, so approve more grant money. So that's, that's why. I mean, it, the, the bits and pieces don't solve the whole problem. It's just, we're taking whatever we can get as we get it and, and, and work around it, but that's.
Yeah, and that's, and, and to Michelle's point, so, listen, even the City of Columbus does not do whole projects when it comes to, to multi-use pathways, for instance, or bike pathways. They do bits and pieces and they, their plan is overall is to start connecting all these bits and pieces into a bigger system. And so this is money that is going to be available to every township, village, city within central Ohio. Okay, so there will be some competition to it. Uh, so I can't guarantee we'll get the money, but we're gonna go after that money because it exists and it's for the purpose that we're, we're looking at using for. So there's not, except for the newer developments in Perry Township, we don't have sidewalks. We don't have sidewalks in Perry Township or in Worthington Hills, uh, except for one very small section. And so I understand it. I understand the concerns that we have. I understand our roadways seem wider because I have this, this maintenance line that everybody seems to think that's a sidewalk. It's really not, but.
And it's not an approved multi-use path like that.
Correct.
People use it.
But they use it and stuff.
Not actually a safe.
So. So, and I realize your roads are more narrow and I know that because this one down here makes me walk those roads. So I know that.
This one gets on. Inception of what the, how wide the road is or what the road's purpose is when you have that double line down the center of it too.
Right.
It doesn't, it doesn't necessarily feel like a neighborhood road because neighborhood roads don't have a double line down the center of them. You know, it's just a.
Well, and the intent there is just to make it to where folks don't believe that they can cross over and cross back.
Can I ask a good question? So four or five years back, the owner of the church across from, um, the district. Correct me if I'm wrong, they got approved to do a bunch of density in there too, didn't they?
The old bookstore.
The old bookstore.
Yeah.
They did. And then, and we negotiated, so several residents and me being a part of that, like, you know.
But I remember, but I remember that traffic, they were doing a right in, right out and the whole thing was they were gonna have to go up, come out, come down and around, which is going to, which the, at the time was, people are just gonna come up with McVeigh, come down. So the other, the other part of that is that was approved. They just didn't move forward with it. So I don't know where that's at, but that's gotta be brought back up and say, hey, you know, we, you may be talking about the density of this and, and it is a lot, but don't forget you guys also approved this, this thing, which is gonna, and, and that wasn't a great traffic sol- solution to begin with anyway, so it, cause a lot of times everybody just kinda focuses in on the project at hand, but the other part of this thing is you've got this other project that didn't have a great traffic solution that's gonna compound that. If that developer says, hey, it's ready to go, now you really have added a lot of problems.
You really struck on a, a, a very important part, which is that the traffic study that was done in twenty eighteen by ODOT was very, very good, considered all the options and said the one sixty, so the biggest problem is the one sixty-one Lenworth Road intersection and the railroad tracks and those two should be addressed thusly. And, and it lined it out and said, do them either one, two, or do them both at the same time. Everything else was.
Yes, and we, we were financial partners with that. We actually started that, but, and, and Lenworth is, is going to start this year.
It, it was considered, you know, that was the plan and nothing has been done on those two critical fronts. And the Lenworth intersection, where they're supposed to extend the turn lanes, that isn't scheduled till twenty thirty and there is no schedule for the railroad crossing, which is the other problem because it's not at road grade.
Right.
So even, so you can't even get the number of cars you should be through the intersection because everybody slows down to go over the railroad tracks.
Yeah, I mean, this is really, the solution needs to be something like they did on Hard Road.
Right.
And, yeah.
So the Lenworth intersection portion of it, it's just because Worthington wanted to start with that, first of all. And I agreed that that was the, the critical link in this whole process is to get that done. So we're gonna start taking property this year. We're gonna start buying up property in that area.
To be very clear, we is not the township.
I'm sorry, the group. One sixty-one, so the one sixty-one group is, is ODOT.
That's right.
Franklin County, City of Columbus, City of Worthington, Perry Township. Those are the four or five funding partners that they're coming. And again, we're a very small piece. We're the smallest piece of that whole picture. It's a seven point six million dollar project, just the Lenworth intersection right now. And the price keeps going up, so we have pushed ODOT to say, because they will be responsible for taking that property. They're the ones gonna give the, the surveyed amount and here's what you're gonna get and we're gonna take X, Y, and Z. So Franklin County engineer is our bank in this whole scenario. So we deposit money, it goes into the, what's called a, uh, T I D uh, account. And so money is contributed by local governments go into that. Any grant money that we get, federal money, state money, it all goes into that. Um, but we will start that process. Now, you won't see dirt turn this year, but the behind the scenes of getting things set up and ready to go will begin this year. Uh, but that will be a while before that gets resolved. In the meantime, if this development goes in, this five hundred units goes in, you're gonna instantly have a huge problem on your hands.
Well, and that's the question and your point, um, sorry, Andy, you know, was, well, there's all these different things happening. I mean, how do we, there, there are all those other data points that I think are great. You know, since that twenty eighteen study, which identified those two projects as the most critical to alleviating the traffic problem on one sixty-one, we've had not just the Elmwood proper, uh, project approved, we've had another thousand units added to that corridor between the district and the area where Anderson's one is.
And.
And now this one is gonna be adding five hundred and there's another twenty-five acre site of Ohio State that was just sold and you've got the space.
To the same group.
And I will tell you that.
So you've got all those and you've already got the, the inaccuracies in the current traffic study, which I've got a copy of, you're welcome to have it. Um, I got it electronic.
No, I, I want it from ODOT. I want them to walk me through with whoever we get.
And I agree, that's a great thing. Cause you know, the impression that we were given is that there is, their only objective, and, and I just want this to be in the back of your head as you're talking to them, their only objective was to facilitate traffic in and out of this new development without making the one sixty-one problem worse. And so they look at the no build situation and they look at the build situation, they say, okay, it's gonna get worse because you're gonna dump a thousand cars onto one sixty-one, but if we put a turn lane across our frontage so that people can turn left into McVeigh, kinda get out of traffic, a right turn lane, a right in and out only, the traffic light. When they add those in and rerun their models, they show that, okay, it's still a D, it's still awful, but it is not any worse if we do these mitigation strategies. The light at McVeigh, the turn lane in the middle across from their property and, uh, the turn lane right in and out on the other entrance.
Developer will always tell you that their development won't cause any more harm than there's already there.
And, and you kinda, you read my mind. Like part of what I was gonna say is that, uh, first of all, the developer's study is exactly that, you know, right? It's, you can craft analysis to, to prove whatever you choose. And, and we know that. And that's why we need to make sure that we have folks looking at it that, um, you know, that are advocating for our residents. Um, the other piece is that, you know, certainly it's not just a rubber stamp kinda thing. ODOT looking at it is, is more critical. And, um, unfortunately, and I think I shared this with you before, Mike, so forgive me for repeating, you know, with the last development where the bookstore was, they, the Columbus City Council, when we spoke with them, was very much, you know, you all just need to get used to the fact that that's how it's going. And frankly, they don't.
They don't care.
They don't care.
They don't care.
And, and they, they wanna put more buildings, they, you know, uh, uh, clearly if you look around the city of Columbus overall, you see a lot of development, which is, um, again, it's not a matter of being pro or against without putting infrastructure in first. You see that everywhere.
Yeah, and that's what we're trying to fix and that's what, you know.
And we, yeah, we've been talking about it for decades about one sixty-one.
Development in, but let's.
Let's have an actual.
In the meantime, because it's gonna.
Was there a company on the name of that, or on the front of that traffic study?
Timely Horn.
Okay.
The other thing about the light, and I'm curious what your thoughts are about this, is, you know, the light is in and of itself is a double edged sword for us. Of course, it would make it easier for us to get out or in as residents, but it also means that everybody from the north hasn't, uh, cut through through our neighborhood, more so than they do today because it's easy for them to get out. And I'm not, I, I don't know where residents land on that, um, just overall. I mean, I know the folks that I've talked with, but that's difficult because it's, it, I'm, I'm, I'm more of the mindset that I don't know that I wanna light. I'd rather have it be difficult for me to get out and easier for
Yes.
a thousand more cars to come through. Um, that's my opinion, but I think there's a mixed, there's, right? There's mixed feelings about that because when we're frustrated sitting at that light, what we want is out, right?
I've got ten teenage drivers that think it's a safe day. I want them to be able to get out.
Right. I mean, for the most part, truthfully, I go out the other way and go around if I have to get up there.
But so is everybody else who.
Exactly.
Buying a house or renting an apartment in that space.
Was there any conversation at the N W C A meeting about, uh?
It was not in two ways.
I hear you.
Anything.
I hear you.
I can get that.
About the school district? What school?
It's Worthington.
It is Worthington.
Brookside.
It's Brookside.
I'm sorry, I didn't call the superintendent.
No, no, so I knew we were gonna talk about it, so I just thought I'd ask.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
So that means, of course, very obviously, right? No matter what we do, we're going to have more traffic.
More traffic, cause, um, so when, have you guys heard when they're gonna start Brookside Elementary, the, the school district?
I haven't heard anything on it recently.
Okay.
I know they're still, and they're still telling us.
At the PTA meeting last year. So it'd be after five years. So our first graders at the time would finish their elementary in the old Brookside.
So your current second grader.
Yes, well, and so at least three more years.
Three more years, okay.
But I've since heard that that kind of stalled out.
Yeah, Jenny has said that they haven't said anything.
Yeah, Jenny has said that they haven't said anything more about elementary school.
So they already had when they, when the, who came to talk to us? Mike, who was there? Um maybe the, it wasn't Angie, it wasn't Deputy Superintendent who uh. Somebody else, I'll figure out who it was, said that when they open the alleged new Brookside, it's already gonna be full. It will open at capacity because other buildings are already at capacity and to and to. Increase the size of Brookside was to lighten the pressure on other buildings that were already overflowing.
It wasn't Tim Garing, was it?
Randy Banks, maybe?
Maybe it was Randy. What's Randy's?
Randy left.
He left, um.
The building director.
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically, construction and building director.
As far as the school said anything about the development?
The the morning after we had been at Northwest Civic Association. And telling them about the meeting and the development and everybody looked shocked. Like they didn't know or like they hadn't heard. I mean, I don't think anybody would be surprised to be like, okay, they're gonna. The land was in contract and there's a developer, but I think just the volume. Of apartments and condos.
Yeah.
Was jarring to.
Yeah.
Um the staff.
So on behalf of the board, I'll just say this on behalf of the board, we apologize that you experienced that. I will tell you that when. We have a development in, say, our neighbors, our Columbus residents. I know that we always tell our boards, whether it's Board of Zoning Appeals or whoever. Be respectful, be professional, allow Columbus residents to say what they want. When they want, give them the necessary time to voice their concerns. But at the end of the day, this is a Perry Township development. And what I'm most concerned about is Perry Township residents' opinion, not Columbus residents' opinion. But be professional and and understand that they have an opportunity to have their voice heard. What I heard about your meeting was very disrespectful and very unprofessional about how they approached that. As if basically you're from Perry Township, you don't really matter. So for that, I I I apologize.
Yeah.
For the board, I apologize for you having to experience that. That is not the way a public process should go about. And a representative from a local government, even though Columbus big, there's still a local government. They they should approach it a lot differently when people come forward to them with a concern.
Well, I'll say, I mean, N W C A, we've worked with them, we've had their um board members in our meetings, we've. Uh so that's, it's maybe a change in work.
The few board members were curious to hear our concerns. And and wanted, I think, to hear like, oh, they haven't talked to you guys? Oh, you didn't know about this or, you know. They they were willing to engage, I think it was, but.
Okay, got it.
We're good. Thank you.
So the things that we can, I mean, I and I, you probably already noticed, but the things that are more in our control, obviously, we will attempt to. Continue to engage on the traffic study and and the impacts. We can't make them not build something there. But, you know, hopefully, if we can, if there's enough pressure, then maybe it becomes a density less dense. I mean, that was. That would be even a a win, a partial win, but what is in our ability to address? Um and it won't be an overnight fix is how we handle traffic and. I know, Chet and I have had conversations about this, Andy and I have, Jim and I have all separately when it's not a meeting, cause they're not up. That that's where we need to to do more diligence around what are the solutions and options and and it's it's tricky. Because no matter what, we're not gonna be able to make everyone happy. I mean, even if there was an unlimited bucket of money, right, which there's not. Not everybody wants speed bumps or not everybody wants sidewalks if they're gonna have to clear them or, you know, maintain, like, all of those things come into play. So we have to figure out what the best solution is that addresses the majority of the issues.
Agreed, and there was, yeah, my question is really, is Perry Township gonna take an aggressive approach to. Getting more information, getting the traffic study, having it analyzed by somebody in a timely manner. And then pulling the relevant facts from the other developments on the corridor and the other traffic studies to make the case to ODOT to say. We need this fixed along with development as opposed to ten years from now. That's the question, cause I mean, I I would be glad to support whatever the Perry Township trustees are gonna do and do in whatever capacity I can. Whether it's canvassing Brookside to give pictures on on us, on a petition, whether it's reaching out to Congress or a. Councilman White, whose kids go to Brookside and who was on City Council for Columbus and has a vested interest in in that traffic not being any worse. Um, you know, we're glad to leverage our relationships and our skills in order to help out. We need somebody to take the lead and. And and be a voice and help us coordinate better.
Council's predisposed disposed to approve this.
Agreed.
As soon as it hits their desk, okay, so. I think what the board needs to come to terms with, you know, I think the money is. Minute in regards to all the other things that we talk about, so. Um, problem is I don't have a a proposed letter of engagement from any engineering firm to say, yes. Board members, please approve this so we can get somebody involved. We'll do that work behind the scenes. We're we're gonna get some uh proposals in here quickly, so if we could get somebody on board to look at. It won't take that long. It, I'm I'm told it it wouldn't take more than sixteen hours total for this project to review it. So it could be done in a week. Um and we could head sit down with that that company and say. Before we meet with ODOT, tell us all the good, all the bad, there's the stumbling points here. What our argument's going to be to that.
Any chance some of us could attend that discussion where we. We're hearing the analysis of the traffic study.
Uh that will be between uh ODOT and Columbus. Relationships are important. Okay, so, I mean, we can report to you what we think those issues are. So that you know that and and obviously, anything that we have that's a written report from that uh engineering firm. You can have. It's it's not something that, but the actual conversation with with the Deputy Director of ODOT and with. Uh the Director of Development and Director of Transportation, her as well, uh for Columbus. We're not gonna have a mass audience.
Well, I meant the conversation with the you guys and whoever you hire to.
Probably have that person come in as a guest speaker. And you can have a copy of the. Yeah.
Yeah.
Be great.
And you can ask questions.
And again, we're already circulating the the traffic study.
I.
My point is, is that we've got some, I I think, some good conclusions, even though none of us are traffic engineers, we're not idiots and so. We're we're going through it and saying, hey, wait a minute, look at this. They assume no traffic going worth on McVeigh. Isn't that a big red flag?
Right.
And so.
Well, and that's the thing, I mean, it doesn't pass the red face test, you know, it just, it just doesn't. Um but yes, we will, we can certainly make sure and I can communicate. You know, as soon as we know when that guest speaker is gonna be on deck, I can post that out there too and you guys can redistribute it as you choose.
Is that, is that traffic study, you have that in digital format?
Yep.
Can you send that to me?
Yep.
Right, awesome.
I will get, we'll get it this week.
Thank you, we appreciate it. And and you know, I know it's frustrating because they're our neighbors right there and they just. Don't care. I mean, and hopefully the city council member who students go to the school, hopefully that brings a different um. Home to that conversation, right?
Help us with Morpsy or I really need to put pressure on to get the developments early uh improvements.
Yeah, this is, this is ODOT's corridor. The not, Morpsy has nothing to do with this.
Uh I thought they coordinated between county and city and state.
They do for funding.
Okay.
For funding infrastructure projects.
And so.
I'm a huge supporter of Morpsy.
And so if we're looking at ODOT for one sixty-one, Franklin County Coordinator for the intersection, Perry Township for McVeigh. City Columbus potentially for a back door out of the development on the go down or on the Fiesta.
Yeah, that's not happening.
Well, I mean, those are all the options that.
I know.
Would would improve the whole.
It really, it really has to be a conversation between ODOT, Columbus, Perry and the county engineer, only because the county engineer by statute is our engineer. We don't have a a traffic engineer, like City of Worthington has their own engineering department, they have their own traffic engineer and I got that. We don't have that by statute, it is our county engineer and he's well aware of this development, cause he was there yesterday. And we had dinner last night talking about it, so um we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that those people are there in the meeting. After we get somebody on board, somebody that can give me an expert opinion. Here's the list of things that they did not include or that they should have considered but did not consider or. You know, conclusions that they that are all wrong for whatever reason. And, I mean, the feeling I got from the ODOT Deputy Director was, we're not giving them the light. We're not doing it. On top of that, apparently, I guess the the turn in lane into the has to be burned, so that's. That means they have to move this storm sewer system back further into more property. Which they don't account for on their drawing. So there's a lot of things I don't think, they put a very nice space on it to say, here. Let's crunch as much as we can onto this postage stamp. And if we can get a fourth or fifth floor, that'd be great too, you know, kinda thing, so um there's just too much. I mean, the, you know, the, I don't think they have a.
I wanna go back to the space.
Attention pond.
Well, it's it's kind of the same thing that happened with the the church project.
Right.
And it's like, you know, they, again, conceptually it worked, but then when the dollar bill started to get. Going, it was like, it doesn't make any sense. So and they may find the same thing. It's like, hey, can we cram all this stuff on here? Yeah, but then when you start getting into the details of it. It's just, you know, it might not go, so.
Which would be the hope, right?
Right.
They have to go with the left.
But it doesn't say that we shouldn't be doing our diligence, at least, you know.
And no matter what, it's gonna be something, so we need to address the traffic issues. I mean, at some point, it's gonna be something.
I think that's all it is at the end of the day. Something's gonna be built there. We're just concerned about our neighborhood.
Of course. Oh, as am I, yeah.
I want them to be able to walk to school in the.
And we too are are very pro development. It just has to be the right development for the area which you're proposing. And that's why I say all our development projects are single family homes or single family condos, some of the condos are basically homes anyway, but. Um, we're all for that because basically the areas in which we're developing are single family homes all around them. So it's hard to argue, oh, my gosh, you can't develop on that property. I live in a single family home, you want a single family home next to me, and you know, it it gets into the multifamily housing. You know, discussion, which is, it's a problem for us, it's time being.
Yeah.
But I, I I understand. If you can take any solace in this, we have a development. Uh at the front of Worthington Hills, it's in Sharon Township. Sometimes we have to look out for uh. Our sister township and so they wanted to put a lane out on the Club View, which is the ma- is like McVeigh, okay? And we made that go away. Lot of discussions, a lot of relationships. They're forcing them onto three fifteen, a right in, right out with no light. That that development most likely will fall under its own weight at that point in time. And and it's our hope that we put enough barriers in front of them to say, hey. You need to relook at this. To Andy's point, you know, you start adding up the dollars, then the development project sometimes doesn't make sense.
Right.
I'm not guaranteeing it, but that's kind of the the recipe that you try to try to put together.
Well, and you know, it it's amusing to me is that they put those crosswalks across. I'm like. Who is gonna let their child walk across that crosswalk on one sixty-one? Just like when they were gonna do the bike path on the side of one sixty-one. Like, I I you could not pay me money to send my children down the side of one sixty-one, but.
Yeah, we put in a crosswalk, it's like.
That, that's perfect, yeah. So, yeah, it's, so anyway, we will continue to share information. Um, I know I have your emails. I'm not sure that I have yours. Could I get?
Do Luke, do we need their contact information?
Yeah, for the meeting no minutes, attendees.
Yeah, that'd be ideal, cause I can choose.
Sure, let me just tear up the page up.
Michelle's gonna give you a second. Yeah, so we get everybody.
Do we, do you have anything you wanna add or?
I'm just a neighbor, I'm not on the on the civic association, I just, I chat with them.
Okay.
Um about this project and was just here to support. If they had any questions, I was at the meeting a couple weeks ago.
Okay.
I don't know that we've met. I'm a neighbor too. I live.
Right, I live on McVeigh Court.
Yeah, I'm on McVeigh West in Estelle. But um, so it's nice to meet you. If you could post it.
Thanks, um more than welcome to stay and getting to the point.
It's really even more fun after this.
But I'm gonna, can I, I'm gonna take a minute.
I also.
Oh, I was like, you don't have to ask permission.
I also got a lot of information from the N W C A, so please, we definitely have. Conflicting opinions as to how that meeting.
So what what was, what was the chairperson's name?
Monica Tull. So and she.
Buddy's not on there anymore, is he?
No, you, she needs a lesson, so.
Well, that's what I mean, but she's been, she's been very helpful to me. She's allowed to give me a lot of information and a lot of opinions on where to. Where to push and where to push and it's been very helpful, so I don't know if I'm gonna have to destroy that relationship completely.
Cause I understand that she was not the problem, the problem was the developer.
Uh, no, I think if you ask a bunch of the other residents who attended, they would think that she is the.
Oh, okay.
She was leading the discussion and was was very brusque and cutting people off and constantly reminding people that. The pointless meeting was not for you, here are your questions, the pointless meeting is for me to inform my board so that they can vote tonight. Okay, that was kind of her crux.
Well, that's that's part of informing your board is to listening to people's concern.
And she, she's like, she made the comment, you know, well, if this is gonna help inform them, great, but if this is just you looking to get more information for yourself.
So let me tell you, the civic, the civic associations, those civic associations are part of the process.
Yeah.
But their influence is like this much.
As I'm learning.
Yeah.
But thank you very much for your time, it really.
Right, appreciate it, guys.
Have it. It just needs to be installed and so here mortar, you hope.
It's all zoning's fault.
You know, somebody's got.
And those two guys next to you, they ain't gonna help, I can tell you that.
You're kicking that. I don't know if you. Yeah, I know those bunkers aren't asking for yourself again, you're so.
Um, so anyway, but I am happy to say so, because, yeah.
Yeah, um. So uh why don't we go Worthington Hills, can I think?
Uh, May third is the, uh, I think it's gonna be the same day as uh Brookside, is Brookside May third, I think?
Yeah.
Yes.
But it's May third, um Worthington Hills, appreciate, I don't know how you're gonna split that up, whatever it looks like.
I'm not sure.
Uh, Mary waved the uh the fee, so I don't understand what it is, not just a date.
Sounds like a good day to have a garage sale.
Yeah, I don't know. So uh. I don't know if anybody's gonna ask you about sending something out, but.
It's already in my drive to my new car.
There, thank God.
Okay. We're motioning it all, so.
And I'll be getting an email from Kristen Metzl to do the uh garage sale now.
There you go.
What, I'm glad you said May third, cause I'll be doing it on May second. Yeah, uh, F Connor Rebelo.
Uh, we have a, I just got an email from um. Neptun, uh, they're, the H O A presidents are meeting tomorrow, they're in coffee or whatever. The ballot issue did come up, so we may have to meet with them. Um, and I just didn't remind him, I said, the ballots are ours, under our control. It isn't like the H O A can come in and say, remove them or keep them. It's not in your purview to do that. We do wanna hear from you what your opinion is, and he said, well, we want them removed, and I says, well, who's we? Cause, you know, I've heard that before, like, everybody wants, go in the blank kinda thing. So we'll have to figure out how we go down and and approach the residents. They're gonna have to maybe call a meeting or something or we talk to them or do a survey or something. But right now, you got the ballots up, right?
Ballots are up, uh, I believe that. The residents on the Revelo side that live on the emergency access was strongly opposed having those out. Both residents.
There's a reason why they're up.
First of all, that's a reason why they bought their house.
It's a reason why, yes. That's all, I'm sorry.
Yeah, uh, zoning, anything? Yeah.
Not a thing.
Yeah, there's no, um, updates on the, uh, outside of the B Z A meeting on the Brookside.
No, we're just, we're just waiting, uh, first, April first, there'll be a decision rendered by the uh, P board.
Yeah. Everything going good? Do you know the zoning code yet? Like, there will be a test. So, yeah, you are allowed to cheat.
Hey, by the way, thank you for the, uh, taking the time with, uh, Mr. Roper's favor. Yeah. Anything for those folks on Circle Green.
Sure.
We love our goods.
I love our shit.
You treat every, every call or interaction on Circle Green with reverence, okay, so, that's.
No, honestly.
Understand that.
Just make, if there's ever any, like, equipment, anything that has to be stored, stashed anywhere, where you wanna put it is in front of Roper's house.
Yeah.
Because he's fine.
It is yard.
It is yard.
Yeah.
The grass, for sure.
Alright.
He's like, I don't know what to say to that.
Right across the street from the nicest mailbox in, uh. That's right, just don't block that.
See, that's where I can put the basketball goal and that.
Oh, yes, what are you doing with that, by the way?
I I left it, I left a note.
Okay.
I left it addressed.
Your basketball thing.
I'm looking into a complaint, and I haven't heard, so, uh.
We may be able to help.
Right, it's, this is.
Or basketball.
Is it really being?
It's in the dead end, my basketball goal, it's in the dead end. And there's a, I don't know, Menards bucket, and it seemed to be the community Hooper Scooper, so all the bags are just falling out of it onto the.
I think they took.
What is going on there?
I went, uh, Monday, was it Monday or by?
I hear a word.
It was up there today, they had, there were new bags falling out, and they had a large rock, lid on the bucket with a large rock on it.
Okay, so.
The large one.
It's still not, you you can't.
That's alright, they just use my yard, I get, I pick up little plastic bags all the time in my yard, so. I do wanna get a sign that says, if I find out who you are.
But I can't.
Not gonna be.
They're small, they're bags.
Alright, road department.
Hey Luke, uh, old business, salt barn update, uh, Eric has. He's almost completed everything we've asked on the gate, uh. We asked him last week to put plates, uh, behind the bolts to keep the bolts from pulling through the the wood of the post. Uh, he added those plates this week, uh. Still needs to work on adjusting some wheels, we'll kinda wait and see what he does there, um.
When are we gonna get to the painting part?
Uh, he was, he told us he was gonna be painting it here soon.
Well, he.
Weather permitting, that's what he said.
Weather permitting, and he has some paint that is ideal for that, he's curious about the shade, gray or white.
And consult on the color.
Well, we, you did mention Mr. Roper there. To look like it's not painted.
Right. That's what discussing was, natural concrete look, and he said he has the paint that would mimic concrete, so.
But we could ask him to bring it to us, show us a intersection, and so we can look at it.
Let it dry.
Let it dry, yeah, yeah, spray it with water and stuff, make sure.
It looks like it's not painted.
Yeah. So is he doing one side?
Yeah, go do all three.
All sides. Okay.
See, a war, that's a war.
But he did, did say to you, I'm here recently, that was today, right? That he likes, he like, he's gonna send an invoice, he's not gonna get paid till this job's done.
Yeah.
How high up, how high up is that paint gonna go on this? Uh, it's gonna go all the way up to just underneath the, uh, the campus.
Okay.
I told him to be extra careful, I do not wanna sink paint on the campus. It it should be at least a foot or two below that, you know, I mean, those. You you'll never notice like a band around the lot, especially if it's same color, same color.
It's not gonna be the same color, I can tell you.
There won't be a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be Hakesbury.
That'll shoot.
That'll shoot gray, that's it.
That'll shoot gray, okay.
Uh, this peril.
Anything else?
One more thing, uh, we, there was a concern about the drainage issue down in Brookside West on Brookdown. Uh, we were all emailed about it a couple weeks ago. I've been working with the resident, uh.
Oh, yeah.
There on the corner, it's thirty eighty-five Brookdown, um. I asked them to apply for a right-of-way permit, so we could kinda be, have a little bit of control on what they're doing right there in the right-of-way, uh. They submitted the application this week, uh, I'd like the, uh, the board's approval to waive that fee. They're not gonna be doing a lot of digging, a lot of excavation in the right-of-way, it's more grading to get the water to drain.
This is fifty dollars, right?
It's a fifty-dollar fee.
Uh, Ms. Chairman, I've moved to waive the fifty-dollar fee for the right-of-way permit, uh, for weather dress.
I'm turning thirty eighty-five. Second. Yes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. That's all I have on the agenda.
Okay, we hit fire an email, police?
Um, nothing under old business, new business mode, and two, except under resignation from Reserve Officer Josh Abshire. Uh, he's had some personal things gone in his life that he needs some, he's to figure out, and. He's leaving a good standing, has the opportunity to reapply down the road if things.
He's like, we just fired him.
It was, it was in, uh.
He was from Cher.
No, 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 he was, he's, um, he went through the process on our last hire for full-time. And he was number two, so he, we brought him on as a.
That's right.
Sir, but, um, something changed in his personal life, and, uh, it's a little tougher right now.
Okay. I'd make a motion that we accept the letter of resignation for Reserve Off- Reserve Officer Abshire.
Uh, second vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, second, I would like the approval to sell his body armor to him, um, body armor is custom-made. And he would pay the full price, because it's relatively brand-new, so it would be no cost to us. Um, I had a conversation with, um, Administrator Petrosi about it, we can't reuse it, and he's willing to pay full price for it.
Make the motion that we go. So, uh, Officer Abshire gives body armor.
Uh, second vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, one question, who does he make the check out to for the trustees, Perry Township? He will write. Just Perry Township, okay.
Yeah.
She's so surreal.
No.
Lunch is on Abshire for the next one. You could probably be crushed into the, um, the armor line item. Oh, okay. That works perfect, that's all I have.
Uh, Administrator.
Um, under old business, we are having a training session for healthcare. On the twenty-fifth, I sent y'all an invitation for that, um, they're gonna provide lunch. For us, when they come, we'll be meeting in the, um, police department's conference room, because we have training here. Um, but all, our account has been set up with Merflex, uh, it's just. Getting implemented and and getting people up and trained to do it. Uh, chief is mandated, and I am is mandated that all supervisors at that attend the meetings. For each shift, for each group of work. Folks have their own contact they could go to if they need help trying to get this thing up and running, so. That's where we're at with the healthcare update, under new business, um. We'll need a motion to accept, uh, Mrs. Beatty's retirement agreement.
Uh, Ms. Chairman, I move to accept Beth Beatty's retirement agreement in request.
Uh, second vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm staying. Yes. Stay. Yeah, same. Okay.
Watch you every minute.
Um, to have it. Next, I need a motion logged.
I'll make the motion, I moved through the revised offer of employment to township administrator John Petrosi.
Second.
Vote? Yes.
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 And another sign.
And next, I need a motion to declare the, uh, attached list, I think you guys have all seen that list. Uh, from the administrative department obsolete, no longer needed for public use, unfit for. Use acquired or having no value to the township and authorizing disposal by auction or dumpster.
Uh, I'll make that motion.
Second, both?
Yes.
Voting the burden change.
Are we just, are we able to just donate the children's shirts?
Um, we, we decided that they are going to make ideal work rags for the service department.
Okay.
They will have a purpose.
I didn't get all, and guy said.
You just got the one, yeah.
I just got the one, yeah.
Yes.
Alright, so.
Feel not supported.
My hammer and mallet.
That's when I want it, I kinda have it.
One thing.
Alright. Anything else?
There's no awkward signal from Mike.
Uh, fiscal officer.
Um, okay, just a status on where we are, the the new, um, server. Um, update was completed today, and that means that Becky and Amanda can, and Faith and whomever can, um. All be on the U A N at the same time, which is definitely progress, that was about fifteen hundred, signed for tonight.
Yeah, the, uh. We, we have to cut them, and you guys assigned that, they they won't implement it until I tell them tomorrow that the check is on the way. That was never part of our conversation the day we were here, but they called us today and said, we can't. Do this until we actually get our payment, so, it's set up, they just.
Yeah, I got my password.
They can't turn it on until tomorrow, I will call Chris the first thing in the morning to let him know. Your check's on the way, I'll drive it over to think if I have to, and it's not thinking.
Wait a minute.
It's.
Day or U A N?
No, it's ideal.
It's, yeah.
It's ideal, and it's not, it's not to think people, I mean, Ahmad was here today. And he said, it is their process out of wherever their headquarters are.
Is it Pittsburgh?
Is it Pittsburgh?
It it's my process to normally get thirty days payment term, so it would seem like it's.
I'm gonna drive the check over, so we can get you girls all lined up to be on it.
You girls?
Ladies, I'm sorry, you're, you are.
You know.
You're all younger than me.
Killing me.
You're all younger than me.
I was just having this conversation. Senior Grimes, God rest his soul, he's older than you, obviously, he used to call the ladies the church. Yeah, like your girls, now they liked it, because. Yeah, different generation, okay, but I always thought it to be somewhat pencil. Is that the right?
If I, if I were to say you boys did a good job, would that offend you?
Okay, but if if the term girls has been, has been used in a way that is demeaning.
I told you.
For generations, and I can tell you, coming from the workplace, it also is.
Okay, we're moving on. Fiscal officer, what do you got?
A request of motion for approval of apparel and discouragements, I don't announce my.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Vote?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, alright, uh, we have an executive session tonight. So, anything else before we go into executive session? Hearing none.
These are all like, I wanna go.
Can somebody, can you remove her? Very.
I didn't bring my taser, and I'm going hands-on.
I mean, you guys have to remember, I, you know.
Alright, I've moved to enter into executive session pursuant to O R C one two one dash two two G one. To consider the compensation or dismissal of a public employee by roll call vote.
Mr. English.
Yes.
Mr. Roper.
Yes.
Mr. Cheney.
Yeah. Thank you all.